All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this Board of Selectments meeting to order for May 11. Roll call. We have Donald Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, Andrew Doherty, our manager, Phil Crossman is absent. Through agenda, do we have any traction? Or a position? Okay, and will we approve the agenda presented?
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. All those in favor? Minutes approved minutes from the April 27th meeting, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? Approved and signed, treasurer's warrant number forty-five, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor?
Is it three changes on it?
Yep. We're all set. The no communications speakers on the floor. Hi, Alan. Go ahead.
He's muted.
He's muted. You need unmute.
Thank you. Just because the Housing Committee is not on the agenda, and I know you have a very full agenda, especially with the broadband presentation. I just wanted to give you a quick update. The Housing Committee is moving along. Mary Terry, as you may know, has offered to continue with us before having a signed contract with the town because she feels confident that between the town town meeting and the Island Institute budget, that money will be there to pay her. So we're moving along and we're about to design the survey, and Matt's a big help with that. And also, I just, I don't know whether it's on Andy's agenda tonight, but I'm concerned about the Planning Commission. Holly Salt resigned as the chairperson without letting us know. Fay told us when we arrived for a meeting last week. And I've tried to communicate with her without success, so I don't know what's going on. And I know we have important work to do, so I'm hoping somehow that can get sorted out.
Well, that's unfortunate. It requires us to accept her resignation. I-
I'm not sure she's getting off the committee. Fay said she was staying on the committee, but she wasn't ready. She didn't sign into the meeting, and there was no way to initiate the meeting because as chairperson, she had the Zoom link.
Oh, okay.
Maybe Andy knows about it. I don't know.
Well, perhaps he should have a co-chair. You know, just in case something like that happens.
That would be good.
All committees really should have a co-chair. But, okay, at any rate, thank you, Alan, for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Anyone else for speakers on the floor? Okay, seen them. Committee and department reports and appointments. Ruth Machnell report.
This week's report, Dan, had not all the information had been entered. With how it was entered or something with the program, so we didn't have this week's. And they've been focusing on Brown Road grading. Getting ready to grade, in some cases, getting ready to grade, they've been bringing material on some of the roads in the focus right now. Now we're starting to put the trash cans back out. And we're getting ready next week to start subcontracting Culver work on Round Island Road. So we just have an announcement going in the wind this week, and we'll put it up towards the end of this week to let folks know. But we'll start working in North Haven roadside at that intersection on the Island Road and start working towards the airport. Place in Culvers through that road. So that'll start next week and hopefully be done within a month or so. That's mostly what they've been focusing on. Of course, getting ready to move, they started moving some stuff up to the new building. That'll be underway.
Are all those colors on? Like? Seems like that's a lot of colors. Is that all for Brown Island Road, or is that?
I'm not sure. I have to go look and see. I mean, I don't know how long the sections are, but probably it all depends. I know a lot of them are. I just don't know exactly what came off that truck and exactly where they're headed.
Okay, any other question? Okay. The Broadband Task Force, the broadband survey results, a presentation and discussion.
Right, so this is Matt is going to share his screen and present the survey results.
Alrighty. So, like Gabe mentioned, I'm here to present the long wait of results of the broadband survey. I am just one second. Can you hear me all right? Everybody can hear me? Okay, good. So, yeah, once again, here to present the contents of the survey results, as it was conducted by the Fox Island Broadband Task Force for the duration of April of this year. And so to provide a bit of an overview for anybody who may not be familiar or just a bit of a refresher. The Task Force was founded in 2015 after the publication of the Tilson Coastal Broadband Study that gave a general overview of some of the challenges and costs associated with bringing broadband to island communities like Vinal Haven. And in the years since, they've been working very diligently to identify and bring ultimately to fruition some of the potential solutions. And more recently, in 2020, they worked with Action Technology to publish the Broadband Report, Vinyl Haven Broadband Report, which gave a more in-depth look at two potential models that the island might be able to adopt to eventually build out its broadband capability. And then, following the publication of the broadband report, at the end of 2020, the Task Force started its broadband campaign, which was made possible through grant funding from Main Community Foundation. And this campaign consisted of a series of community conversations with representatives from other coastal and main community that have themselves built out broadband capabilities through a variety, employing a variety of models, whether it's a municipally owned one, or public private partnership, or something other. And then, following the conversations in February of this year, the Task Force then asked, and subsequently proceeded to approval from the Select Board for gauging the community's willingness to support the implementation of a fully municipally owned and operated fiber-to-the-home service on the island. And so, the proposal that was linked to the survey, just a bit of a refresher as well, would be the proposal was for 100% owned and operated by the municipality fiber-to-the-home network, which means that fiber optic cable would be laid up to each property who opts into it. And the capital cost for doing the build-out would be paid for through an increase in property taxes and grant funding. And then, operation cost would hopefully be offset through subscription fees. And then, also just a brief refresher on the contents of the survey. It consisted of five questions. The first two being whether or not, one, the respondent was registered to vote on Vinyl Haven, kind of a proxy for whether or not they are a full-year resident of the island, and also whether or not they own property on Vinyl Haven, which gave us information as to whether or not they would be paying property taxes and therefore be liable for the cost of the build-out. And then, the third and through fifth questions pertain to the proposal itself, whether or not they support the proposal, and whether or not they support the town's grant funding. And also, if they do not support the proposal, any of the reasons why. And so, as for the survey itself, we sent out 1,355 physical surveys in addition to distributing it online with Vetra Fiber Map. And of all the surveys, 555 were returned for a response rate of about 40%. And for context, the average broadband survey generally has a response rate of about 25%. So I think we were all pretty happy with the turnout on this one. And so, of the actual respondents to the survey, just under half of them were property owners who were registered to vote on Vinyl Haven. So they are full-year residents who own a home on the island. And then, about 45% were property owners who did not live on Vinyl Haven. So presumably, majority seasonal residents. Here's a graphic breakdown of the response. You can see about half were voting taxpayers, and then a bit less than that were seasonal residences. And then, a couple from the voting non-taxpayers bracket, and then also the non-voting, non-taxpaying bracket. And then, so for question three, kind of the meat of the survey, the question being whether or not you would vote in favor of the town borrowing up to $5 million in order to build the fiber-to-the-home broadband network. Of the 555, 379 or 68% answered yes, and 176 or 32% answered no. And under there, you can see a bit more of a breakdown by demographic. You can see that about 60% of voting taxpayers on the island, so full-year residents who own property, were answered in the affirmative to the question, and then 40% no. And then, a strong response in the affirmative for, from non-paying tax, non-voting taxpayers, with about 80% of them answering yes. Then, here is a bar chart breakdown to kind of visualize that a bit more for you all. And then, breaking down more in terms of those who answered yes to the question. So the 379, about half of the respondents were those non-voting taxpayers. And again, a bit less were the voting taxpayers. So this kind of gives you an idea of who answered, you know, who is in favor of the proposal. And then also, a pretty significant part there also, voting non-taxpayers. So presumably, those who live on the island and either rent or live with someone else who owns the home. And then, for those who answered no, you can see here that a strong majority of those who answered no to the question were voting taxpayers. So about 60% of them were not in favor of it. And then, a minority of non-voting taxpayers also answered no to this question. And then, for question four of whether or not you, whether or not the respondent would support the town receiving grant funding to help offset the cost of the project. You know, obviously, this seems like a relatively intuitive thing to pursue. And of the survey respondents, 85% of them agreed with that and answered yes. And then, 91 of the respondents, 16% answered no. And of note, of the 176 people who answered no to the previous question about the proposal, still about half of them support the town seeing grant funding, which is, if anything, a bit of an affirmation of the work the committee's been doing. And it gives you an idea of why some people might not be in support of this, which we can get a deeper look into with question five. So if someone answered no to the third question, they're allowed to give their reasoning. And so, of the 176 who answered no to question three, about two-thirds of them, 67% thought that building a broadband network shouldn't be paid for with taxes. And then, a bit under half, 45%, thought the town shouldn't own and operate a broadband network at all for the community. And then, a couple also thought that the proposal cost of $5 million was too high, but would support a lower overall cost of $4, $3 million. And if you're looking in your board packet, I think there may have been a typo. But just clarifying that the 67% were, gave the reason of not using taxation to pay for the build-out, not that the town should not own and operate a broadband network. And here's also a bar chart breakdown, once again. And also, people could check multiple boxes for this. And so, the percentages will add up to more than 100%, of course. And so, in addition to the five questions on the survey, respondents were invited to give any comments or feedback. And of the 555 surveys, we received about 180 respondents gave comments. And they've come kind of covered a broad spectrum of attitudes and opinions and questions. And a lot of also just, you know, positive thanks to the committee and the work they've been doing. But among all the comments, a couple larger themes emerged. One being the build-out impact, whether, you know, kind of the positive benefits of having broadband brought to the island, but also some questions and concerns about how much of a cost, and also where the money would come from for such a project. And also, some questions and requests regarding how the service would operate. So, generally, for those who were highlighting the impact of broadband build-out, they thought that the idea of a municipal broadband service would increase the sustainability and vitality of the island by giving everybody access to the critical infrastructure, kind of like roads or something else like that. They also made note of the significance of having it be municipally owned and therefore publicly owned, rather than owned by a private corporate actor, or make it access and oversight of the infrastructure more democratic and more accountable. Then also, in particular, people, you know, made a lot of comments regarding the importance of having access to remote education, telemedicine, and also, you know, remote work opportunities. And here are just two to quote that I kind of pulled from the response bank. One highlighting that, you know, the municipal build-out for broadband would kind of a quote-unquote future-proof Vinyl Haven, and, you know, ultimately be vital for the island, if that's what server responded mentioned. And then, another also highlighted the importance or the usefulness of the public option being most satisfactory. And then, for the, another broad theme being the one about, you know, funding and costs, there were a significant amount of survey respondents who highlighted their concerns over a tax hike. It would place even more financial burden on island residents. And most people think they're already paying enough in taxes. And also, kind of the funding model for this would distribute the cost of the build-out over every property owner, regardless of whether or not they would be using the service. You know, maybe they don't have a need for broadband, or they're happy with the service they get from consolidated or from Spectrum. And some folks mentioned that it might not be fair to ask them to kind of shoulder the cost for a service they might not ultimately be using. And then also, a lot of folks were unsure about, you know, which way to commit ultimately, given the state flux regarding grant funding. In the mailer, we didn't highlight specifically how much money the town would be able to get from federal and state funding sources. So they were unsure of kind of whichever way they would vote. And that would kind of depend on how much money the town would be able to get to offset the cost. And here are another two quotes that I pulled that seemed fairly representative. The first person, they're mentioning that the taxes would eventually potentially price out, and people who live on the island currently, because they think they're already taxed enough. And then, that second one, mentioning that a private model that would be managed by a private contractor would ultimately not have the tax base shouldering the cost of the project. And then, the third larger theme that emerged was, you know, about the operation and maintenance of the broadband service were to be built. You know, the mailer that accompanied the survey mentioned, you know, broadly, you know, subscription costs and whatnot, but it didn't go into how much service maintenance would cost, and whether or not the costs are accounted for in the subscription costs. And folks were unsure about committing to a position one way or the other because of that. They also expressed hesitation about the town taking on another large capital project at this point because it seems like there are already a good deal of project to town is undertaking at the moment. And a cover-to-the-home broadband build-out is very significant. And then, specifically from seasonal residents, a lot of them mentioned a, you know, if they, regardless of whether they were voicing support or opposition, they mentioned a desire to see option to seasonal access to the service for when they're actually spending time on the island and not paying it for when they're not here.
Did it provide the taxes? Did it provide electricity?
And here are a couple comments also regarding to the operation and maintenance. Some folks highlighting the fact that there weren't, you know, service costs and operating maintenance costs included in there, that first one. And then also, people unsure about how the service would be administered, whether it be a nonprofit or a co-op, like with the energy co-op and whatnot. And then, that third one, they're highlighting the possibility of a summary. And so, though, that can conclude the content of the survey. In addition to, or rather, with the survey, people were asked to enter into a prize pool for $100. Would be names pulled at random out of 188, I think. And the winner of the $100 is Jacob Thompson.
Oh, man.
That's so wrong.
I don't know what sort of shady stuff you picked up.
Jacob has not contacted me about this at all, do not worry. So congratulations to Jacob.
So supper on Jake tonight?
And so, the last bit, also just a special thank you to everybody who made this possible. The broadband committee worked really, really hard throughout the, over the last couple of years, and especially with the broadband campaign, and then for actually getting the survey out, especially Jen Anne, who helped physically package the survey to be sent out to folks. And then also, to Vetra Fiber Map, who helped us design the survey and then put it up online as well. Very handy from them. And that is it.
So we'll turn it over to the board. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Okay.
So I have a question. Someone asked me, so if it's gonna go to every person now, how is it getting to the hurricane green button? That's not part of this initial. So are they not gonna favor it?
No.
So we, we can address that. Jen and I could address that. So when we, when we did the model, the business model, we did not, and this is also in the broadband report. There's a whole appendix about outer islands or so that was anything that wasn't bridged. So it's not diars, it's not lanes, it's just the unbridged outer islands. So there's a whole section in the broadband report about how, what that could look like if outer islands wanted, wanted to be part of the build-out. We didn't include it in the cost, but remember, the original cost that we had in our broadband report was 3.9 million. One of the reasons why we put in the, what seems like an overestimation of 5 million is because we were thinking, okay, what if, what if we do want to do a build-out to the outer islands? But I think what that's gonna, or what it will entail, is meeting with the residents of the outer islands and determining what, if anything, is wanted, what that looks like. Mark Alett, in the broadband report, outlines a variety of different options. You know, it could be wireless broadband, it could be, you know, line on the ground. I mean, there's a bunch of different options, but we, you know, we haven't gotten that far. We haven't met with folks from the outer islands. We haven't pursued that. So it's not technically part of the proposal, but there is room in that cost.
Okay, so the step tonight, I guess, is not, you know, tonight is not the night we're going to decide whether we're going to build this out, obviously. The initial discussion is, are we going to run it before the town, and how are we going to do so? Are we going to have a special town meeting? Or are we going to have a referendum? When would that referendum happen? When would that special town meeting happen? And maybe that would be the first part of the discussion.
What do you mean by referendum?
Like, you know, coming in and voting, like secret ballot, like, just like you would for president and governor.
Well, I think we definitely need to have a town meet at the first.
Well- Well, a public hearing essentially, but not an actual town, or a town.
Right.
And Eric, it might, it might also be helpful for folks tuning in to understand, like, the sequence of things, like what we talked about in our meeting last week, in terms of, like you said, it's, we're not deciding right now if we're, if we're having broadband on the island. It just, so, so folks understand, we have to put something out to vote, then, you know, what would happen next and what would happen next? I don't know if you want to share that, or?
Well, essentially, if we decide tonight to put it out to a vote, and it's approved, again, either through town meeting or a referendum, the next step after that would be for the selectmen to direct the committee to begin pursuing writing an RFP for companies that, you know, would want to run, you know, the network, that would, you know, would want to provide the service. That would, that would be the next step, and, you know, and then that would hopefully occur. That process of running the RFP would begin to occur shortly after the vote. Then, again, that's all contingent on it passing. You know.
What happens if we vote, you know, and we approve the whole 5 million? Does that affect the grant process? I mean, they could still, because I mean, from what I've been reading, there's gonna be over $100 million potentially available for broadband just in the state of Maine.
From what we've been told, if we put it out to a vote, the town approves it up to 5 million. It actually helps our case to get more grant funding because it shows the town is serious about putting in a broadband infrastructure. So if you already have the approval for the full amount of your estimated cost, you're more likely to get additional grant funding. But that's, that's why we feel that the committee feels best to put this out to the town to vote. Do what the town says. Based on the survey, it's a positive response, but when you actually put out the vote, you know, no one's gonna count all of those votes out, right?
Well, it's, it's the need, right? The need for the service when you're talking about grant funders. And are we building out to meet an unmet need on the island, or certain parts of the island? And then the ability to pay, think about the other grants that we're trying to get for downtown project, right? So our ability to match or provide a certain percentage of the funds, so that vote, if the firm would give the approval, you say, hey, we can, we can, we're authorized tomorrow up to use that as part of your match. But the need, the unmet need is also a big part of those grants, too.
What is the service of this? Is it 100 and 100?
It would be, it would be symmetrical gigabit speed, so.
I was just reading something in the Portland paper today that their state was potentially gonna increase what inadequate service meant. So like 25 and 10, was it gonna meet their future proof? So I think it was gonna be, was it gonna be 50 and 10 or something? Did you see that article, Andy?
Yeah, I think it's, Matt, do you remember? I think it was, it was, it's 100.
I think 100 over 25.
Yeah, so that basically, what that does for us is change the definition of what is served and underserved or not served. And the grants that are currently available, the infrastructure grants, are based on the percentage of your area that is unserved. So it makes us more eligible when that definition changes, and those, they, those speeds to define broadband become higher.
And our speed would be 1,000 or 1,000.
Right, yeah. She said 100 over 25, correct? Okay, which right now Spectrum does not even provide. Spectrum is 100 over 10.
How do you feel? What would happen if you didn't have a school?
I can't.
I can't.
So. Well, so now we now we need, so what's our next step? I mean, the survey we asked, we asked the people's opinion. I personally have some strong reservations about the project. I think everybody who is even wildly in favor of it should understand that there, you know, this is a major endeavor and there are risks involved. This is not, you know, this is not going to be trusty, better roads, that, you know, I want to make that very clear, at least my opinion. But at any rate, we did ask the people's opinion. We had, what, 555 total responses? And every single category that we asked for is an overwhelming yes that, you know, they would support. You know, I was, I wasn't expecting it to be such broad support, especially amongst resident taxpayers. I'll admit that.
There was one group that was no, that was the non-voting non.
Right, I don't know.
And that was nine total was.
Right, I don't know who those people are, but. So a public hearing isn't the worst idea, you know, if we can, you know, if we can gather in person someplace and no vote would be taken at such a meeting, it would be strictly informational. And it would be informational and people can ask questions. It'd be a much better format than this right here, certainly, you know, I see. I mean, there's more people attending tonight than have attended in a long time. But, you know, obviously, it's much easier when you're in person and you can ask questions of each other in person. So it's still gonna have to be outdoors, you know, for the foreseeable future, unfortunately, the way the mandates are. But the weather is getting better. And we can schedule a special town meeting or a referendum after, you know, that public hearing. But ultimately, I think that we should schedule a vote at some point in time because of these responses, because of this response. I think that we have to put it out to the town. I don't know what everybody else, I mean, we're obviously on this committee, you know, maybe what the two noncommittee members have to say would be.
I agree with what you just said about a town meeting to discuss, you know, see what people want, what they think. Let's get the facts out there and and take the next step.
Okay.
Like I say, the survey shows this.
Well, yeah, for people that don't have any interest in it, probably, you know, they probably didn't take far.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard.
This will give them another opportunity, that's right.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, give everyone as many opportunities as we can.
Yeah, I want this process to be just as open as possible. I want just as many people who know about it, whether they think it's the best thing since sliced bread, or they think it'll bring about the ruination of this community. I want everybody involved. That wants to be involved anyway.
Yep, I agree.
So should we, right now, think about scheduling a date for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Not, not a town meeting. I think it needs to be very clear that those are two very different things. So today's date is the 11th. We'll try to have a select meeting again on the 25th.
And I I would like to suggest to Eric, if we make it so we can build in a tiny bit of time, it seems like since we have broadband campaign money available, that not to bombard people with another mailing, but since we did put out the survey by mail, it might be a good idea to send out that same comprehensive information about the project and resources and then a notification of the public hearing. So we'd probably need like at least a week to get that together and then maybe give us a few days to get it in the mail.
Okay, so June, it probably is then for a meeting, and hopefully by then the weather will improve anyway.
Yeah, we gotta go enough and.
When are we tentatively thinking about having the annual town meeting? Let's start off with that.
We've been 21st.
The week of the 21st, okay. We should have it before that.
Right.
Either July now.
The second meeting.
Yeah, like some, like, you know, we will meet again on the 8th, so either on the 7th or the 9th, perhaps?
I'm not gonna be home until, I'm, I'm not alive all day until this 6th.
Okay, well, how about 10, how about the 10th then? That would be a Thursday. June 10th.
Yeah, it should be nice enough, like, we could be outside.
Is your intent to have the hearing and to still have have a potential vote at annual town meeting? Or do you want to have a hearing and then wait for the hearing and then schedule when, when I will vote?
Both after that meeting, we'll schedule, we can schedule either a special town meeting or a referendum.
I I don't know what new, I think it should definitely be a referendum.
Well, so right now, we're talking about public hearing.
No, I know, but you said back, I was just putting that out there.
June 10th would be, you know, 5:00 in the afternoon. So it'll be plenty of daylight, it'll be beautiful, sunny, 75 degrees.
It'll be like it was this afternoon if we schedule it.
There'll be a barbecue next door, you know, someone offering soup.
Right.
Okay.
That'll increase the turnout, just have beer and barbecue.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. So there's obviously a lot of people in attendance. I'm taking a guess, a lot of them aren't here because of this. I'm gonna open up to some questions and comments now, if anybody has anything to like to input.
And I I just want to say, if anyone's turning by phone and I muted you, it's star six on your phone to unmute.
So the, there's one phone number here, the 207-863-9966, I think. They are their hand raised. I don't know if that's intentional or not, though.
That's me, Eric Patrick, and I do have comments. I don't know why the option of a partnership is is not being put out there. I I think it probably should have been part of that survey. And also, somebody said, you know, they kind of just said there's only two providers out here, consolidated in Spectrum. When there's a very good service from US Cellular and T-Mobile, I have an old iPhone 7 and I go around different parts of the island, you know, as I do my work and do random speed checks and and there's, there's some bandwidth out there in the cellular world. And I think that ultimately, any fiber to the primary property, whatever you want to call it, is gonna be antiquated by wireless competition. And any future corporate increases will still have to compete with these other options.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else?
Also, that SpaceX thing coming online at some point this year too, right? Someone's had a comment.
Yeah, I'm probably gonna have to try that, because I'd, I'd just like to address some of the, one of the comments that I read about. Someone said that, oh, if you don't like the service you have, you can call up Spectrum and you can ask them to hook you up if you want them to pay for it. Well, I did that. I'm a quarter mile from the nearest Spectrum customer, told them I would pay to be hooked up for their service, and they said, no, we're not gonna do it. So it's not always an option. The service I have now is barely getting by, and I do work from home. So I understand people's concerns and I agree there, this isn't, this is a big project, it's not gonna go just as we planned it, obviously, but I I think this is the best option right now, especially with the amount of federal funds and state funds that are available for these type of systems. But obviously, as Eric said before, I want everyone to be included, everyone to be involved, whether you are for or against it, so we can have everyone get their input in and then we all decide how to move forward together. If you don't do it, and that's what the town wants, fine, but that's my two cents on it right now.
I just asked a question, Tom, about why did Spectrum refuse to hook you in?
They did a psych survey and said it wasn't possible to hook me in. You know, I was willing to pay to be hooked up.
Yeah.
And again, I'm a quarter mile from the nearest Spectrum customer.
Right.
It's not like, I just don't feel like the two big providers are really with working hearts to get us better speeds.
Yeah.
I can't wait around for that.
Can I make a comment about the public-private partnership? We did explore those and wrote about them in detail. Consolidated ju- did respond, and they wanted us to come up with almost as much money as it would cost us to build it ourselves, but we would surrender any kind of control or ownership. Spectrum, we tried, how many months did you try, Gabe, like weekly, to get even a response? Until I argued no response is a response.
And I I just say, to be fair, we we were in communication with Spectrum and they they just weren't able to provide an exact estimate of build out costs. We, what our assumption was is because they already have significant, I mean, they have a fiber backbone, they ha- they own fiber undersea cable from North Haven to Vinyl Haven. So given that they already have fiber infrastructure on the island, the cost to partner with them to do a build out would be significantly less. But it doesn't, it still puts, it it would still require the town to pay a significant portion of that build out cost, but not own the infrastructure. So basically, we would be subsidizing part of a private company's infrastructure, and they they could move forward with basically, you know, charging what they wanted and and likely in DW's case, not a guarantee about equity and 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 providing the same service to every location on the island for the same cost.
Thank you, both of you. Anybody else?
I I would just say, this is not a comment per se, other than just to let folks know if they are unaware. Town website, which is townofvinylhaven.org, if you look under the committees tab, you'll see Fox Island Broadband Network. If you click on that tab, you will see extensive information that the committee has generated over its its lifetime as a committee, which is since 2016, and a lot of information that has been developed in the last six months throughout this broadband campaign. A lot of the questions that people have and a lot of the things that people are raising, like Starlink, 5G, public-private partnership, those things were explored and we addressed those questions in an FAQ. And I just encourage people to look at what we came up with for answers as a committee and bring that, you know, bring your additional questions or thoughts or comments on that information to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, everybody who contributed. Thank you to the committee for their hard work and thank you, Matt and Gabe, for compiling the survey. I thank you to those who did comment. It looks like we will have a public hearing, I'm gonna say one more time, June 10th at 5:00 in the afternoon. We'll we'll have to decide the place. We don't have a place right now, but those details will come up. It'll be someplace in town. Hey, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll move on to planning the community development. Let's give it again.
Okay, thanks. Oops, I have to actually share my proper screen, which I seem to constantly have trouble with. Okay, here we go. So just wanted to provide y'all with some funding updates, because like we were just talking about significant funding here, we're talking about some more significant funding and so just looking at the downtown project, I just wanted to update you all. I think Andy talked a little bit last time about the earmarked funds through our congressional delegation. So Shelley Pingree did put forth the sewer and water components of our project totaling 1.2 million dollars, and that's under community project funding. And I think we're gonna learn more about where we're at in that pipeline in May. Andy's been in communication with Alan Brigham around our EDA proposal, which was presented to the EDA Commission on April 15th. That was for 1.9 million. There have been a few things that needed to be clarified, but we should hopefully be hearing about that essentially anytime. Hopefully, at least by the end of the month. We have one more large grant that we are applying for. This is the Northern Border Regional Commission, and that will be submitted on Friday. That's for 1 million, and we will have notification on that by the end of August. And I just wanted to just sort of show the breakdown, and I I just wanted to also be clear, like, you know, we have you know, we have, this is our committed match, so this this is the funding that that we, you know, have committed to the project. And these are all of the pending sources. And just to be clear, you know, when you add all these up, you're getting, you're getting significantly over almost 1.2 million dollars over this amount. We're not getting all this money, just to be clear, like, because of the timing of these grants, like, we have to put everything in at once, but it will all, hopefully, we'll get something either from each pot or a significant amount from one pot and maybe a little bit from another. The goal is to be able to meet this project cost as we have defined, and therefore, basically, you know, be able to pay for this project without eliminating project components, which we, which we talked about. You know, I I think we recall when we submitted the EDA application, we needed to remove project component four, which is upgrading the downtown parking lot and improving the boat launch. And we put it back in for the NBRC, because essentially, this is the project. This is, this whole thing is the resilience project. So that's where we are with that level of funding for the downtown project. Any questions on that? Okay, and then just, just, I think Andy also mentioned this too, but we did apply for a coastal communities grant to help offset the cost for the North Haven Road culvert assessment, which is in the budget for this coming year, but hopefully, we have a little bit more clarification work to do on that follow-up with that application, which will be sent out tomorrow. But hopefully, hopefully, we'll receive some funding for that to help offset that cost. Any questions on that? So I just wanted to update you all on some additional work that I've been doing, and also Matt has been involved in. And this is some equity work. So just, just a little background is that outside of my town role, I have been working, I think you all know this, with the Portrait of a Graduate project. And through that, we, I had the opportunity, along with some of the other Portrait of a Graduate facilitator team members, to take a training or a course that that looked at how to create processes, and these were prior primarily in schools, but we we sort of translated this to within the community or organizations. But how to create processes and solutions that would be more inclusive and address the needs of what what we call like a marginalized community. So that might be an economically marginalized, geographically, socially, demographically. And then I, and sort of through that, did some additional equity work. and was asked to serve on the main Climate Council Equity Subcommittee. And so um, the purpose of that subcommittee is um, the uh, for the council to review the the strategies or the subcommittee to review the strategies of the Climate Council to ensure that they benefit and don't negatively impact um, all mainers, regardless, again, of where they live. Um, so regardless of geographic location, financial health, uh, social or demographic vulnerabilities. And then um, Matt and I have recently participated, and this is over the last um, three months, um, participated in a workshop series through Antioch, New England, um, that is focused on equitable adaptation and mitigation solutions for addressing sea level rise and climate change. And from that experience, um, I was interviewed as a representative of the town um, as part of a forthcoming Equitable Climate Adaptation Guide for municipalities. And I would like to, in your next board packet um, for the the meeting on May twenty-fifth, I'd like to share that um, that interview excerpt with you all and and um, some additional information about that municipal guide. And if you have um, any questions uh, regarding that, that interview um, or that excerpt, we can talk about it then. And I just wanted to end with saying that um, one, I feel like this work is is really uh, really not too s- too far off from things that uh, the planning department has been aiming to do uh, from from the get-go, which is uh, to be, you know, providing more inclusive and more engaging processes. And I'm not saying we're we're stellar at it by any means, but um, we're just, you know, using this um, equity framework uh, at to to really focus in a lot more and um, present us with questions that we can, we can consider as we try to design more inclusive processes and strategies. And and lastly, that this um, this, the questions of like, how are we involving the community in our decisions? How how are different uh, parts of the community being affected by our decisions? Um, all of these things are coming up more and more in grant proposals. Uh, we need to be able to document our processes and certainly, like, this broadband campaign is one of them. I mean, we were asked specifically, you know, what are the engagement components? How do you involve the community? What are you gonna do? And you need to demonstrate that you, you really are making strides to involve the people who are going to be most affected by decisions. So I'm just, I'm just wanted to share this with you, because um, I think it's, you know, it's sort of here, it's in the forefront. And it's something um, as we write grants and we look for funding and we design engagement and processes um, with the community. We just wanna keep it in the forefront and certainly, um, like I said, I will share more information in your next board packet. Any questions? Comments?
Thank you, babe.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, engineering report.
I sent yesterday an update on the the capital project as well as other projects that are outstanding with the with watering current. Um, so the, may have seen the photo they put in the, in your, my report to you one Friday, the bridge project, the over pieces had gone in uh, for the span, and they begun backfilling and and stacking the granite back on the on the sides of the face of the the approaches. Um, so Gavin had a chance to drive up and see that and take a look.
I have a question. Someone asked me, that, that, that is the exact same size as the old one, right? Same width?
Um, within a foot, yeah.
And someone said they thought they looked way too small. And I said, as far as I know, it was supposed to be pretty close to what the old one was.
Within a foot, yeah. The, when we first started out, what, three, well, three, four years ago now, we talked about widening it so it was uh, a proper two lanes of traffic to go. It's a very narrow two lanes of traffic before and it will still be. Um, and the board decided to just keep it the width, and I think it's within a foot of what it what it is, what it was. Because widening it was gonna push the co- project cost well beyond what we had authorization for. I mean, require us to build out the the approaches and the shoulders, especially on the
I like, I like some of the question I was, it's supposed to be pretty close to what was there before. I wasn't lying, that's all I want to make sure. I thought I wasn't
I don't think that would be right anyway. You wouldn't be lying, maybe perhaps just misleading a little bit.
No, but I thought, I thought, I thought it was supposed to be pretty close to what was there.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to believe. Okay, that's all, sorry.
Um, the public works garage is um, more or less at substantial completion. There are a few things to finalize with the uh, HVAC system from the electrical work still. But you know, they're they're finishing up a lot of that in um, depending on when. Uh, we are gonna add a gutter to um, one of the sides of the garage doors we're cut on, cut into. Um, just to help with drainage, make sure, cause there was some water coming in the way of the slab was poured. And so we said, let's put the gutter on now and and deal with that while while the equipment and the crew are here. Um, so they need to put that on, depending on when that falls into place, when the material, it's gonna be done until squeaker sometime next week. Um, but in the meantime, we're able to start moving some stuff up there and start getting ready to transition. The harbor improvement, harbor management plan is still needing to be completed. And the the Munson Group is the firm that was working with a couple of consultants that were working with us on that. And and they should be by the end of this week having this draft plan or at least an update on where that stands. Um, but they had, if they had some personnel to attend to or kind of matters, I guess, to that firm. So, um, they are expecting to get that to us soon. Uh, by the end of June, I believe, we have to be done with that for the grant period. So that should be on par. The salt shed is, the work crew came out today, they were a little sparse last week, but they were out today. It looks like they put all the brackets in that they needed to on the foundations. Um, so they're moving ahead on that. Um, should probably be able to pull that fabric out, um, assuming towards the end of the week, so not really. That's all moving ahead. Any questions on any of those projects?
Nice to see something being completed after all these years.
Hopefully.
Big, big, big steps.
Yeah, a lot of work.
A lot of work done. Oh, right, this is my meeting, isn't it? Well, that's one old business then. Um, MSA, MSADA Board of Directors, they can see a call for candidates. We received one letter, I'm assuming it's only, this is the only letter we received, from Susan Dempster. I think she'd be an excellent candidate. And to turn, who, I would say, have a referendum in November, a primary November ballot, it would not turn with that.
Well, it's just, you appoint until there's another, until the vote happens. So if if their next vote would be November, I mean, it just automatically until the next
Okay, so if if we, if we were to have a referendum before November, not saying there is one, even if there was one, we would have to put it on that.
They, they, the school would call for the referendum process for to fill their seat.
Okay.
So generally, I mean, it was June and November, that's a standard, that's usually when they put together. If they're prepared to put together and there's a a potentially a referendum town vote to happen in between and on a different date, and they're prepared to be able to fulfill the timeline, cause they have to put out all the papers and people get, you know, signatures, and then they have to pick the ballot. So as long as the time will allow, yeah, they could potentially do that soon, but it's just and they, and they kind of call for it.
Well, I move that we appoint Susan Dempster to the uh, MSADA Board of Directors um, with a term that will end uh, at the next election.
Second.
Second to my family. Any discussion? Okay, all goes in favor. Thank you very much, Susan, for doing it. She was my preschool teacher, and I didn't drive her out, so. And she was Logan's preschool teacher. Uh, Portrait of a Graduate.
So, uh, Mark Jackson is here tonight to present, I'm gonna do a screen share, and um,
Good evening, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear, Mark.
Alrighty, well, uh, as she said, I am Mark Jackson and I have been involved with the Portrait of the Graduate uh, project from its beginning. And mainly because over my lifetime as a student first and then a parent and then a teacher, I've come to realize how important it is to continually ask ourselves if what we are doing for our young people is the right thing to be doing and if we're doing it in the right way. So the Portrait of a Graduate was a project that I was near to my heart and and I wanted to be involved with. Uh, we have now through uh, phase one and two are ended. First phase one was the research and community education plans. That started in January of two thousand twenty and didn't end till February two thousand twenty-one, primarily due to the COVID epidemic and various other reasons. It just got drug out and communications have been complicated all along. Uh, particularly also during the data collection and synthesis stage, which was phase two. We went through them from uh, February and March of this year. We sent out surveys and tried to uh, conduct uh, um, focus group discussions about the questions that were on the survey and get get a community feedback. I think we got close to a quarter of the population around two uh, or three hundred, two hundred and fifty to three hundred people involved in that part. And have now moved into stage three, which is the community engagement and portrait draft. During this stage, we want to continue trying to gather more information from the uh, pe- community and particularly from what we feel were underrepresented uh, parts of the community, were parents of t- students and fishermen. Uh, so the intent here is to put together a small, short video and a synopsis of what we've came up with and what we feel is the uh, information that we got in this phase two and get it out to people again to get their reaction to that information. And in in so doing, gather more information and enrich our uh, pool of of uh, the description of what we think the Portrait of a Graduate is. Um, phase four will be the action plan and and community commitment. Stage three, where we plan to go on through, at least through the end of June, and we'll see how that works out. We're not gonna rush it if if communications and COVID still keeps things slow, but it seems to be loosening up. And if we can just get uh, people together to look at what we've come up with so far and comment on that. Those two underrepresented groups, we could use your help. Uh, I gave it, we gave the same little uh, update to the school board and asked for their uh, comments and and suggestions on how to reach out to this parents of students and the fishing community. Uh, whatever we can do to do, engage them in a, in a more fuller way, then the better we'll be with our, the entire project. Uh, it's just, uh, I was asked to give a short re- uh, synopsis of what we're up to and that's about as long as I wanna talk. So if any of you have any questions or comments, uh, we'd fully appreciate it.
I just, I just have one thing about the fishing thing. I mean, there's pretty important judgments coming out at the end of this month about the whale rule. So maybe after May thirty-first, you might wanna talk to some people from the fishing fishing community. After that judgment comes up, see what they feel is gonna happen in the long term.
Yeah, very good, yes. I would agree.
Video?
So, videos.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Well, thank you.
Make new business, FY twenty-two Pepper Project.
Um, so at the last meeting, I believe, we had um, talked about the the transfer station project um, for this year. So I don't have it included in the budget, cause it wouldn't be a first year payment. It's in next year's budget, in the FY twenty-two budget. There wouldn't be, scroll down here. So if you recall, the engineers had worked up um, first, the estimate for the schematic and design for, that would consider a different layout, um, replace the retaining wall and and re- real kind of, or reorient that a little bit um, to account for some of the goals that you'd had were raised. And so this was the, what they started with and proposed. Um, you know, with the, the most of everything stayed only the same, but trying to make it more streamlined or or and safer um, to get people in and out, instead of everyone in and out of one, having a different point of ingress and egress, um, having it a better flow. And so that's what they had considered and shared uh, for feedback. And then with that, they had came up with cost to do that. Um, so the estimated, the probable cost to be able to do all of those changes um, in their estimation was eight hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, after you saw that, you'd asked for, well, what if they kept a wall where it was? Um, and only look at repaving, um, and then replacing the concrete pad, um, or pads, there's two um, under the distinct containers by the wall. Um, and so that was estimated to be a six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred, um, so almost about two hundred thousand dollar difference um, between the two, to not go forward with reorienting, reorienting or considering a different layout. So is that a project that's been on the radar? It's been something that we had a structural assessment done on that wall. We do need to address that wall, um, proposing that, you consider that for the warrant for next year. That were, the next year's budget, so this year's annual town meeting should consider something, start moving forward. Um, so we just need to have you weigh in on what your thoughts are for which route you want.
I mean, we've, you know, we're committing myself to an awful lot at once. And the only reason, you know, the only thing I don't like, if I go with option one here, the one on the screen, we've committed ourselves to that layout for a long time.
The
You know.
It's an option one, the
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be clear.
Oh, the op- the, it, it, the option of only repairing the retaining wall and repaving.
The one I'm saying, okay.
Yeah.
Basically keeping the same layout.
Right, say, exact same layout, just taking care of what absolutely has to be there. Because, but either, either way, we're gonna, we're spending quite a bit of money here.
I think for the couple, for the two hundred thousand, I mean, that's easy to say.
Yeah.
Certainly, but, you know, for the, for the layout of that, for two hundred thousand dollars more, is something that's gonna be much more efficient. And we're only gonna grow in terms of needing space for crash and whatever. Um, if we, if we go with the first option of just repairing, we're still ending up with people going in and out the same way. I mean, there's no change. I think this, what they proposed here just looks like it will work smoother. Um, it it's more long-term for our needs. I, I know it's more money, but
Right, yeah.
I just feel that that's a better
Couple hundred thousand here, a couple hundred thousand there. All of a sudden, you're talking about real money.
I know, but you know what I'm saying, it's just thinking, you're looking ahead, how many years.
Right.
It's difficult.
I agree that it seems to make sense, but I feel we need a new layout. Entering and exiting the same place doesn't seem to be safe.
It's not working.
It's, yeah. But I agree too, I mean, but the new public works garage is apparently great, but
We have downstream, we have potentially, potentially a broadband project, you know.
I know.
Yeah, and a major
But I mean, certainly, all these things have hit us all at once, I mean, they've been coming at us since I started. On the board, how many years ago?
Six years ago now.
And we're finally just getting one or two projects to fruition after six years. So. I mean, it takes a long time, I'm, I just, I just can't see spending that much money to redo this thing, it's gonna be the exact same. And for two hundred thousand dollars more, you're gonna have something that's gonna have better flow, more room, just a whole better.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, this is something that was talked about before about, you know, that with the improved efficiencies and. Um it's basically like controls, like knowing who's going in and out and what people have when they enter and when they exit, you know, like. Talked, we talked a lot about about just the accountability and actually trying to capture. The fees that should be paid um at the transfer station that are not being collected now or likely not being collected now. Um and I think like if we knew that this was the plan um to put it back on the wastewaterers since their original. Um and I'll say our, because I'm on the Waste Watchers Committee too, but like our original purpose was to. Review and revise the solid waste recycling and composting ordinance, which still we haven't done, we've done a bunch of projects, but we. Have that sort of sitting on the shelf with the idea that, well, if this, if this um. Transfer station layout got revised, it might influence uh like a fee structure or different things in the ordinance that could aid in. Using this layout to increase accountability and control, so I would say like, you know, just doing this without affecting change. In how things operate is, you know, that's. It it accomplishes something, but not everything that I think this board has talked about in terms of actually capturing more of the cost of what. You know, what it costs to throw things away essentially, or what it costs to send things off the island. And I think that with a revised ordinance and um, you know, additional. Controls in conjunction with this new layout, there could, you could actually start to see some of the changes we've talked about for a long time now.
We also did discuss in depth at our last meeting about raising fees, you know, uh obviously as we continue to. Improve waste diversion tactics. You know, you know how much food, I know how much food I throw away, you know, and I I admit it, you know, but. Probably I should have to pay a little more for my bag of garbage because I'm not making the extra effort to dump it in a bin and then. Throw away a box of lettuce I didn't eat just today, it went right in my trash.
Well, certainly, we did discuss the fact that this may um pick up some of the revenue that we're losing. New design. That's probably the discussion. You know, we're losing a lot of money.
This can't be pulled off for another year, let's see what happens, broadband and all of it, so.
What what is the state of that retaining wall, like is it, is it how, how are we talking?
Um, I don't recall exactly the dates that were, we had the study done, but I believe it. I think it was in about twenty fifteen or so, maybe sixteen, and I think if I remember correctly, it said three to five years. So we're, we're at the five year mark, and that was their, their estimate as an engineer, not the current firm that we're using now, but a different one time. Um is what they had put on there, I mean, it's it's old railroad ties and and they got they the. Employees that put it, helped with the other did a great job for how long it lasted and for what it was and, you know, but if you've ever walked down there, I haven't walked down there to. Put stuff on the metal pile or or the burn pile, next time you're up there, you know. Here he is, just take a look, um it's quite precarious and it just, it was nothing at this point, so it. Is one of these projects that presumably you do, you know, twenty, thirty, maybe forty years depending on how you build it. Um so it just happens to be now, um but it's hopefully something that you don't have to worry about again for quite a long time.
Right, and and just if we, if we talk about this and get it um on the board, I assume that's the first little discussion, right? It doesn't mean we're gonna jump right in and start, I mean, it's gonna take a while for everything to come together.
The first payment, the first payment would be July of twenty three or sometime in twenty.
Yeah, depends when you close on the, on the term of the loan, it's usually, usually a full year before that first payment, when we close on it.
Uh Gabe.
Yeah, I just, I, sorry, I just wanted to say, yeah, to this point, this conversation of um of of funding and like. Multiple projects in the pipeline, I mean. So like, we know, like broadband, I mean, we don't even know if that's gonna move forward, if it moves forward, we are. Counting on having a significant portion of that being funded by grants, so. We're gonna work actively to get that funded by, you know, a lot of it funded by grants, we. With the downtown project, we have all these funding opportunities, best case scenario, everything comes through to the degree that we can. Fund everything completely, this is the only project um that isn't already funded that we have no. Really no significant um grant funding option for, so it's 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 not like we can. You know, count on some sort of outside source that is is going to fund it, and if we're gonna do it right, it's like the only way we can do it is. Is to approve it, so um I I do, I guess I I don't see like. Comparing the broadband and the downtown, even though, yes, it'd be like, we're not gonna mobilize every single. Capital project at the same time, because that's just not within our capacity, but it gets it in the pipeline and it is. It is the one thing that there's no other source for, so um just wanted to say that.
Yeah, this project would be somewhat time sensitive in the sense that we obviously don't want to do this during the summer.
That would not work.
Um, you know, and of course, coming out of winter, you gotta kind of be ready to go as soon as the, you know, the weather allows, and so. Um, you know, if if put on the warrant and if approved, you know, the timeline would be to probably aim for late winter and early spring and have it. Up and running, um you know, by late spring or the summer, um before things get real busy again. Um, but, you know, and again, that fits, that all goes forward as. But I think it's less about which of the, you know, whether it can wait another year and it's more of which of the two options should you pursue. Um, you know, based on that study that we have, has done, or the assessment that was done.
Also with broadband, you know, that's not, that's a, again, not going to be an immediate payout either, that would be a, you know. If we're going to pursue grant funding, the grant funding wouldn't be pursued until after we've, after it's been approved by the town, you have to wait to hear back from grant funding. And then decide, you know, when you actually borrow the money, you know, just even the task of borrowing the money is a waste of life, if it happens. So. I don't know, you guys are being really quiet, you're making me do all the talking.
I've already expressed my opinion and how I feel about it, so you know what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and Jake and Donovan have been pretty quiet.
See both sides of it, I I think I come down with the hand though, I mean, if we're gonna do it. Let's, let's improve it so it works better, it's more functional and we can generate. More revenue from it that'll help kind of pay for itself, like, like the plan was all along, like it was. That you take it enough fees or it pretty much covers the cost to run it, so, like, we can reach that goal, that'll save the money down the long.
Jake, give any other thoughts?
I mean, it would, it would be nice if we would wait another year, see what happens with all of it and else, but it doesn't sound like we want that.
And escape said, most of the other things we are going are, you know, assuming we're getting grants.
They're eligible for this.
Right. For that matter, if we, if if there was not one second grant funding about broadband, which is not likely, but if such an event occurred. Just because if we're authorized to borrow up to that amount of money, we could say, well, I don't think we can, we should be borrowing the money without any outside funding, you know, we could. We were not obligated to do so.
Right.
So, on that note, I suppose. Just curse me down, God, I I move that we go with the uh proposal to change the layout. That that eight hundred forty eight thousand five hundred dollars. Seconded, seconded by Donald Cool, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? Okay.
Um, the only other project that you need to be mindful, and I think I, I think I just want to clarify, but I think I heard you at the last meeting was to focus on the. Pavement improvement plan, if you will, hiring consultant for next year um or the summer. To work with us to come up with a a real road assessment and plan of action to make improvements on on what's needed. Before putting on a warrant for next year um amount of loan, um I just want to clarify that I did. Capture that correctly and that's all the plan to do, I didn't move that.
Right, and that, you know, the next, the next step might be, you know, obviously, obviously color replacement, finishing ditching. And, you know, maybe, you know, going down to the road bed, you know, making sure the road bed. In good shape before we bother and slap asphalt on it. I remember, I remember the town meeting when I was a senior in high school. That somebody from the state, I believe, came out and they looked at whoever the road commissioner was at the time and said. Everything from Rabbit Lodge up needs to be completely rebuilt and everybody, everybody gasped, that and that was now twenty, almost twenty years ago. And we in about two thousand and six, so we paved it. And we're now right back where we were when I was in high school, the road is falling apart again. Okay, um draft annual town meeting warrant. We have to set a date, I see there's no dates set on, yeah, we usually do it on a Wednesday, just for yourself, you know. And you were hoping maybe the week of the twenty first, Andy?
Well, I think that's what I, I think that's what we usually request, that I believe graduation is planned for that weekend fire.
Okay, so we do on the nineteenth, that would be, that would, that's a Wednesday, Wednesday the nineteenth.
What?
Right, no, I'm, I'm, Eric, you can't, Eric can't read.
Wednesday the twenty third.
Wednesday the twenty third, I'm not gonna make. I move that we.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
I think sports are usually done by graduation, right?
Okay, and we, and we also usually meet at six o'clock in the afternoon, correct? Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I want to mention about the time um is presumably, I mean, my recommendation is to try and plan to do it outside and not try and set up. Like we did last year, multiple setups for in-person radio participation, much in the parking lot. And just plan to just do it outside, so we can, we can gather, um even inside that building, at least as of today, we have to. Keep distances and be limited to how many people we can be in our tour and, you know, six foot spacing. Um so if we held it outside, you know, it can be mindful of the timing, and we're gonna have relative good daylight probably until. Like eight thirty and nine, before it starts getting a little too dark to to see things, we'd have to have, you know, lights essentially probably set up or plan to have lights. Um on that back corner.
Actually, um they have, the school has a big tent. We have tents, right, they got through the covid.
Radio, yeah, but it's about lighting, but lighting.
So what do you want to start at five thirty, or? I, yeah, just be mindful of that, I mean, I think in the past, you know, we're, we're usually talking what, two to three hours, depending on what time, one and a half to three hours, depending on what's on the agenda.
Right.
Um, you know, I was actually thinking if broadband was on there for consideration, it was probably gonna be a much longer meeting. Um, and so if that's not gonna be on there, then perhaps six o'clock is still fine, that gives us three hours. Um at least three hours before you probably need to.
And what, what is the guide in print size, it's still fifty people or?
For where?
What is the inside guy, fifty people or?
Uh, I believe it's based on occupancy, and so I think it's going to seventy five percent, I believe, my.
In a couple of weeks, in another week or so.
Um, but you still need to be in a public building, still need to be separated and have distance, as far as I know.
Right, if we can do this outside and everybody can be distanced.
Well. There's six, I mean, you don't, we don't want to go a half hour early then. You know, outside.
Yeah, we can do five thirty. Five thirty, it's only five minutes.
Yeah, I feel like we could probably end up doing it. So I know we have a plan for.
We should plan for that, people showing up. So. I move that we. Approve the uh annual town meeting warrant uh to be held on.
You wanna have any other questions on those, so I. Well, it is, the only thing that wasn't in there that you just decided tonight that I didn't have in the draft was the. The treasurer's statement in the article that would authorize money for the transfer station, the cleaning wall, so I have included that in. Another version that I have on the screen, I'm just going through that article, it would be article thirty eight.
There you go. Usually put it before the other ones.
Yeah, usually, so it's typically how we, the town had it done, it's usually at the end of the, the financial commitment. Articles, um so the debt service articles thirty seven, um so. Generally, it's happened to be inserted right after that article, um that's where I was closing.
I, I move that we, I'll withdraw my first motion, I move that we. Insert article thirty eight. As is presented into the, into this warrant.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Cool. All those in favor?
Then the.
And opposed? There you put.
You guys already voted.
Oh, well, no, you didn't, you didn't raise your hand, it's not me, you have the right to oppose, you know, I want to make sure the right people.
The only other one that I'm usually, you talk about for warrant articles um every year is setting the the interest rate.
As I said, we can only have it at six and seven, which is probably good, since the interest rates have gone down, covid's and a lot, yeah, we should.
I gotta obviously change the, go back and change the due dates, um it's still this current year's. Eight percent there, I, I did change it so the max is six percent, but didn't change that, it's next sentence there, so. That would be modified to November first, twenty twenty one, and May second, twenty twenty two, and an interest rate of six percent. That's what you're recommending.
Yeah, that's why I think that's exactly what I recommend.
I've noted that on ours, that that would be on the final version.
So November first and May second, that's the date?
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
Um, just on that last page, but you've already said it, so if you go back and fill that in.
Five thirty, twenty hundred.
I'll, I make a motion that we approve the annual town meeting warrant with the changes that we have just made to be held on.
What day did we say?
Twenty third.
June, June twenty third at the Vio Haven School at five thirty in the afternoon. Be there at Lee Square, it's been seconded by Donald. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now, we have pain in the butt bureaucratic thing we have to do.
What is this?
Oh, never mind, we're just, on the nativity scene, reserve authorization went on at the bureaucratic party, yeah.
I hope to have, um I've had an email request um to purchase one, uh so. The town has a reserve fund for the nativity scene, um in the past, it helps replace, make improvements to the stand there and to replace some of the figures. Um of the nativity scene, and so the currently. We have.
We have like three thousand bucks.
Approximately twenty five hundred dollars um. As of. Number thirty first this year, and they're asking for sixteen hundred dollars to be able to replace one of the figures. Um, there's a company you can order them on, and it's fiberglass, whereas the one bit now are rubber, um so. They're fairly old, I forget which figure it is exactly, but Matt Crossman was inquiring about whether we could use. Um, consider using the reserve funds to purchase one of these figures, um he said it was sixteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Authorized, isn't it?
What's that?
That's what it meant for, right?
It is, it's just something that you guys obviously authorized. It is. It's just something you guys obviously authorized, so if you're willing to authorize sixty hundred bucks to.
I my approval.
Second.
Second of a family. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now, a proven sign warrant and notice of election for um the. MSAD eight budget referendum for June eighth twenty twenty nine. I.
Well, I would only spend it, sorry.
She's with Jake. I I'm moving that we sign. The uh warrant and notice of election. Second of a Pam Alley. All those in favor? Now, which is nine copies. We all have to sign on the exact same line as we did on the first one to the last one. I don't know what bureaucrat came up with it, but they. Were bored that day, but we can do that after the meeting.
Whatever happens to the state when we vote for that seven funded fifty five percent of all school budgets, something we don't get even five percent.
Well, I recommend you write a sternly word sternly worded letter to your legislators and governor. Uh.
No money.
Report we have report from town manager.
Already is again shared um the bridge bridge project update. Um I actually gone up expecting they were expecting to have temporary closures from twelve to three while they unloaded those pieces and put them together and. I got left here at twenty after twelve and saw a truck by the quarry and passed another one rounding uh the cove. And the neck grown at all. I guess I'll see the third one and that truck was the third one, so I didn't even get to see it, but um Jake Barber had had a drone. Um on site, so he had actually kept some good videos, some good photos of it from above, so I'm hoping they'll send those along to us to share with the community. Um. Into the garage and the salt shed. If you haven't been up to the. Work site um for a while, and there's the foundation framing of the salt shed. I feel the fabric holes up on top, having a roll next to it. Foundation work. Um. Just talked about the transfer station, paving uh Scott and Scott Linda found opening up library last thing as of last week. Um, the week of the seventeenth, so not this week, but next week. Um, believe Tuesday, um that. As long as we've got all the things they need in place to be able to do that, that's what we're spending. Have, um there are some computers that uh we need to get installed and up and running um as part of that Windows ten. Windows. Ten upgrade that happens. Um, we have them always got a good month there and get them. Um summer program, they've been talking about summer programming with the. With him and the and the trustees and the friends and um there is. Plan plans to have uh virtual, some of the virtual programming. Um, and then we have some nature programs lined up, but they open do outside and. So that that is coming back on board. I know a lot of folks have been asking about that and. Last I knew, Scott had mentioned that the audio of the. E-books should also be available in the coming months. Um. As long as that stays on track, so that's another service that we talked about for a while now that hopefully is going forward. Uh sewer district, the commissioners um. Are meeting in a couple of days to go over the FY twenty two budget. Um just sharing um you, the last meeting they had, um the regular meeting they talked about. Um Will was kind enough to share all of the capital needs um that are kind of on the radar at the moment. Um. Approximately seventy thousand dollars to replace the pump station control panels. Um, the hope is that perhaps they don't all need to be done all at once, but they are over fifteen years, it's over fifteen years old. Um, yeah, over fifteen years, almost twenty years old.
Eight, yeah.
Computers, the control panels, I mean, they're just starting to become obsolete. The you can't find components and parts for them as much anymore. Um, you might be able to find a refurbished one or rebuild it, but. Um, you know, I think the the estimate Will got to do that on one of them was. I mean, half of what it was to get a brand new one, and if we can get fifteen or twenty years out of a brand new one for. Um, I think the cost to get a brand new one was sixty four or five hundred bucks and. And so with ten of them, um and potentially some some install fees, puts it about seventy thousand dollars to replace all of them. Um. Getting inspecting and getting the sewer lines is something that because we have a new system we haven't done, there's been a couple of areas in particular that they've had freezing, you know, pipes freeze or or backups, but they they've dealt with that, but. As as a whole on the system, we have not done that yet, and both the insurance company. Um and the state are expecting us to be doing that more regularly, um anywhere from three to five year cycles. Um. And so the the costs, if it was done all at once, um not counting lodging fees. Is about forty seven thousand dollars, um so if we can break that up into three or five year increments, which we're looking at doing. Um it becomes a little more manageable and gets us on a. Plan and program to be compliant to that. Um, we're not for hopeful, but there aren't any blockages or problems, but this is the step to try and identify before it becomes big problem. And of course, that first section that we would we would aim to have done is Main Street where the most users are and all the commercial, you know, restaurants and businesses are that. Would put more probably more strain on the system and, you know, so should there be a bit of problem, it also winds up hopefully with this downtown project and so. We wouldn't have to do that and then find a problem if it was one through there. And we're planning on um proposing jumping that up and working on that. Um, I'll just add, I did give um each of you the yesterday, the. Department of Treasury came out with additional information on um. The American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, the money that was coming to the states and local governments and counties. Um, so a lot of information was just provided on that, that was more in depth. We knew. On the surface, they were talking about things like funding broadband projects, funding water and sewer improvements and economics and. Stimulus to people addressing. Public health response, and there was, I guess, six broad categories that the money could be spent in, so. We've got that, um bring it up with the sewer district, because it was one of those places we knew it could be spent. And, you know, and would would suggest that that be a consideration to to use some of those funds. Um for some of the sewer needs, um and then, you know, either all either all or in part. Um, you can look for another way if you don't want to spend all of it there, look at spending it somewhere else that benefits go outside of the district. Um, no shortage of where it could go, but just want to take a look at that and think about that. Um, best I know is that we're we're scheduled to get between a hundred and a hundred and ten thousand from that. Um. But if you want to between now and the next meeting, think about review this, think about, you know, where you might think to have that spent. Uh, we have to believe you have a special time meeting to accept it, if you will, and authorize where we spend, but. Just be thinking about that.
That's the amount that's coming to the county that's gonna be figured out.
No, separate, so states are getting a certain amount, every every town and city is getting a certain amount. And every county got a certain amount.
We're getting our individual mountain is something the county will.
Yeah.
I would like to want.
How much is on the bounty getting?
I think the I think the county is getting, I think it was seven point seven or somewhere over seventy million dollars.
Yeah, so why don't they just tell us not to send in our English here in the budget?
I have not looked to see how it works for counties, obviously, because the counties don't have. Some of those things that are identified in the. Sheet I just gave you, um. You have something else to my?
No.
I I was just wanted to add. Um, when you said about the sewer and that benefiting people, only people in the district. I just would like to say that that's really not the case because the sewer benefits everybody, the entire island. So. Um, if we do take the money, it was. Yes, it might be far from sore, but it's benefit for everybody, is we all do it.
We all flush some type of.
Everybody uses it somewhere.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't mean to imply that it didn't benefit everyone. I just noticed. Section that it doesn't, and it's a project that does in some way. Um. At least give you guys a chance to think about, now that we have more information here to think about. If we get a hundred, all a hundred and ten thousand that they're saying we might get, you know, where where best is suggested that.
Well, as and as we said, I don't think I don't think we're gonna have to take that seventy thousand dollars to control panels, I think. Certainly Will would know best what ones might have to be replaced um instead of doing them all at once. That's a great deal of money. Um, the line then flushing definitely need to do, so.
And we have the. A climate adaptation plan and a fiscal sustainability plan down a couple of years ago for the sewer system.
Right.
And in that fiscal sustainability plan, they identified um over eight hundred thousand dollars of need for replacement of components and and. Pieces of that system, I believe it was in the next ten years. Um, you know, so. What's on on here on the screen is obviously a small part of the whole because it's it's now over twenty years old.
Right.
So certain components of it are just expected to start, you know, pump is only gonna be only get you so long. Um, computer components, we just made a major investment this year.
Well, like you be.
Um, that was one of them that was on there, so um.
And then spend no contingency. Fund until the last few years, so they didn't plan for that in the beginning. I don't know.
Um, ambulance update, I believe, and if I haven't told you I called that, but I believe you all know Pat is filling in as interim director. Uh, since Kerry um departure. Um, we have posted the full time director's position again. Um, it's on MMA's website, it's on our websites, and I I did pay a fee to post it on this live in work in Maine. And for a share with me from um someone who works in HR somewhere else and in. Paid for it to be on that site as well as in the Portland Press Herald and two other newspapers. Um. I believe we list in Auburn area, I might forget what the other one was. Um, just to try and get it out there, um so hopefully we've got. I think two at the moment, one just came in this afternoon showing some interest, hopefully that ends up in the some middle of an application, but there is one that we have scheduled for an interview. Um, Thursday. Um, so solutions I don't know. What's that? Who sits on? Uh, the initial interview will be with um Mark and Pat and I. And we'll do it virtual, um and then for any second round interviews, we'll we'll ask that they come to the island. We'll show them the service, we'll show them the medical center, have them meet some of the crew. Um, you know, and probably. You know, think about a possibility of a plane ride in one direction, just so they have a chance to see because if they're gonna run the service, that's. One of the ways they're gonna have to be going back and forth, so.
Sure they don't get air sick.
Uh, we did that, we did that when Kerry was hired as well.
What's he said?
Yeah.
But we'll start with the first round of interviews and see where that leads, hopefully we get a few more interested.
Uh, reporter members.
I'm also.
Crickets, crickets.
I have a. Well, one, a couple things. I was asking about that recycling, did you happen to see anything on MMA that thought they. Provided testimony of one of other bills on the. The ways that they were gonna try and make the plastic producing, the packaging paper, recycling, did you? Seen any of that in the report paper today?
I did not.
Okay, I was just curious if you know any more about it.
That was the single use plastics?
Yeah, mostly packaging, you know, because it can't be recycled. They said. Like um Tremont, which is on Bar Harbor, said that like five percent of their total. Solid waste budget goes to just throwing away like those single use things, and they were in favor of one or the other, though I didn't know if we had taken a position or if you do any more of that side or anything, but.
Yeah.
Sounds like. One of the, one of the ideas was kind of copying what they do in Canada. There's like a. Some way like they make the people take them back, or I didn't really kind of understand, and the other one was something totally new that means.
You mean the company has to take stuff back there packing?
Well, not necessarily, but they'd have to like. Figure out a way to, you know, like all the companies would like kicking money to, you know, try and. Have like somehow, or you know, like they pay um the town or the um what is it, Calico Maine? You know, no period, there's just a whole. And then the other thing, which isn't really my thing, but there's a log on the deep water road that's pretty close, but. Says hidden driveway, can people just put signs out there? Or is that something the town should do? And it's also really close to the roadway, you know, that was that was brought up to me by someone else.
Going to Jim Jimmy Lawrence driveway.
Yeah, it's right there, like.
Trespass, you know.
Between, yeah, coming back down the road and there's like a log there. It says it's a little hidden driveway or something, and people are just asking. If they can just put signs out. I said, I don't think so. That's technically a state road, right?
It's in the right ways. It's regulated what can go in the right ways.
Someone said, I mean, someone said I haven't actually found out first since.
Yeah.
Someone said like pretty much. Almost all the pavement, so you have to like slow down and like. Um, it's kind of a hazard, so.
It is. It the the stump was on the other side of the road, right across the street from it. Right on the edge of the road, no sign on it, but right on the side of the road there. It almost caused an accident.
Someone brought it to me, I brought it up.
Yeah, it needs to be. I al- I almost pulled over and kicked it off into the ditch, but.
I just, I just want to know, like, should the town put up a sign there, or, I mean, doesn't seem like. That's that shop of care, but it's a hidden driveway or whatever it says on there, so.
No.
So I brought it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've done your job.
We'll follow up with it.
Okay.
We're both applying commission chair. We have to appoint someone that I that they do.
No, they they will appoint their own chair.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna say, when we were gonna accept her res, when you were gonna make a motion to accept a resignation. Do you don't don't we, shouldn't we? Somehow hear from that person themselves.
Yeah. Because she's not, she's not planning on getting off the committee.
No, I know that, but I mean, in in future.
Yeah.
We usually.
Like usually the person would say.
Right, they would come to us, right? It's not beginning off. They want to.
Andy's checking his email, he said. And he sent, he did send me an email.
For some people.
Yeah. No, all of those towns have to deal.
I was thinking of you.
One more here.
I can't seem to find it right away.
Okay, well, we can, if it's something we need to address, we can do it. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, I voted twice.
All the way we're joining.
Okay.
Same thing for all those.
Oh, yeah, oh, and thank you, everyone, for uh joining. Have a good evening.